Thank you for joining. Let us call toward the May 17th regular meeting of the Arizona Board of Education. At this point in time, let's hand the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Special recognitions and presentations, we have Lori Scott funding requests.
Morning.
Morning.
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Well, I'll go ask anyway, and then you can tell me that. So, we are requesting our general floor be completely refinished this summer. The building's 10 years old, and I have some documentation here. The building's 10 years old. I really don't want to be photographed. Please don't photograph me. So, the building's 10 years old, and when the floor was installed, it wasn't the best quality floor. I mean, you know, the contractor will tell you that. So, we knew that we would have to keep up on the maintenance of it. So, I mean, it's been redone every year, just the surface, wax taken off and it re-wax. But, you know, it's time for it to be completely stripped down, redone, and then like completely resealed and protected. We got a quote from RM Huffman, and that's who installed the floor and originally did the artwork and everything on the floor. And the total cost is $26,320. We have half of that, and we've saved up some levy money knowing that this was coming. So, we're just asking the board from the contingency fund to give us half of that.
I think that that falls within the... So, for the members that might not know, we have a contingency fund set up. And what we have done in the past is require the schools to present at least half of the money for smaller projects like this. This means requirements with that half, and I think that if there is no objection from the board, that we could ask to redend this doubler to place this on future agenda. That's something that we can pull off our contingency.
We actually, it's down lower on the agenda, so I don't know.
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
Well, normally, I did talk with Caitlin, we put it on the next one, but we have it on this one. So, you guys can decide if you want to bring it back for the next one, but today, I'll follow that down.
That's fine. That works.
We do have funding in the contingency fund that's over.
Or we're going with...
No, no, just completely strip all the color off of it. All the finish would be removed, and new finish put on, and it's sealed.
They'll sand it.
They'll sand it down, completely down. Like, they'll take the color off. And we're going with like this stain this time, we're not the color, so.
We're going the same thing as well. Every so often, you know, the floor, they start to discolor with all those top coats. So, we're going to take it all the way down to Fairwood, and when it comes back, it'll look random. And that floor needs attention, it really does. I think we're taking half that out, the main, but the other half.
Okay. So, there's no... Wait, wait. So, the maintenance, so you've got $13,000, correct?
We didn't.
So, we added the money in the contingency fund for this, correct?
Yes, for the...
So, it shouldn't be taken... Are we talking...
We saw that the...
I want to make sure that that's not coming out of your...
Is this... Is this more of a wear on this wood?
Yeah.
I mean...
It's wear, but it's also, the wood was not, it wasn't a professional grade contractor. Had a lot of rust in it, and it kind of, you know, that little bit of movement or cracking, different things. I think this will really, really help a lot.
So, if you look at the pictures on the third page, like, they had to, when we, the first year we were there, even though they'd let it sit and acclimate to the humidity of the building, we did have a lot of movement on the floor, and it hooped up in places. So, they had to take some, I mean, and they left, you know, expansion gaps everywhere that were supposed to be escaped. But that didn't help. It expanded more than that. So, they actually had to take some wood out, and nail some down. So, like, part of it's not a floating floor anymore, and that caused additional wear as well.
Let me think of this question. The same company that put this board down originally, that's doing it this time. I just wondered...
But they didn't pick out the wood, the contractor that built the building picked out the wood. They just installed it, and like, the work they've done before, like, you know, stripping it down before, it has been, you know, excellent, but it just needs more this time than it has in the past.
Was this whenever we had crew 52 that we used to do this work ourselves, right? I mean, I know they did. I mean, down to 26, so you can't do that.
That's what we did when we put down cheap grade, then we just come back and do it again. That's what I always say, I think, would be ahead if we have to do these floors, have to have a replacement, that you put the best quality down rather than second. Because then you just have to keep going, $26,000 now, give you down another $30,000 or $40,000.
I think that at that time, they were trying to meet budget in that school bill. And that's the result.
There's no structural integrity issues, are there?
Not now. They fixed this.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll do the way around, and we'll put it on that later. All right, proposed levy rates, sorry. Well, I want to, it's on you, Jan, it's on you, Jan, but I want to wait to get to the special recognition presentations and maybe to hold up. Proposed levy rates, there are no proposed levy rates. They have been the same as they have several years. Thank you to the Arizona County voters and the public that we have new excess levy rates. Solder on November 5th, 2024. They will begin November 1st, 2027, I'm sorry, July 1st, 2026, for the fiscal year 2027. We have reduced the levy tax seven and a half percent. So, I want to thank everyone, and continue to utilize those funds, invest in our abilities. There's no action either to take, and is there any discussion on these levy rates in front of you? No? Okay.
How much did we, how much did we, was it originally, and how much did we drop it to? From bottom.
The levy rate, the excess levy, I'm not going to expect until July 1 of 2026.
Right.
So, we don't, that's not a discussion that doesn't impact level. That's next year, the 2027 fiscal year.
That was my guess. My question was, what was the last levy rate with the last...
Okay, so our current levy rates right now are exactly the same as they have been. I'm thinking most of the... You have to do the numbers, right? There's not a decrease in the current levy rate.
Not now, but it's a...
For 2027, yes, it'll be, the class one bracket, the excess levy will be 18.331 versus the 20... 20.331.
They're right here, though. They're in the scheduled proposed rates for the levy.
Yeah.
1940, I guess class one is $19.40 right now. Class two is $38.80. Class three is 77.60, and class four is 77.60.
That is for the general fund. There's that on the legislature.
The current expense levy?
Yes.
So...
The excess levy is the next year.
Excess levy is... I think it's 1940, they're the same.
No, 20.331.
We're getting the second one? Yes, sorry, 20.33, class two, 48.66, class three, 81.32, and class four, 81.32.
Maybe I'm also, but levy rates at this point right now, how much is in trouble in 2026?
Nothing.
I think you mean for the excess levy that we just have?
Right.
Nothing. That cannot go into effect until F. 2027.
What's the reduction, though?
Yes, seven and a half percent of 2027.
Seven and a half percent?
20.7, yes.
We've got to double that.
This is the last year of these rates.
Now, is, that edge, it sounds like a...
Oh, yeah. That's the levy that was...
County covered on that. That was the levy. That's what it is.
But when they keep cutting, will it be all right?
We weren't, we weren't...
Okay. There's no further discussion on those levy rates. Next is the dental and vision plan discussion. There's some information in front of you.
Yeah, you have a draft plan in front of you. It's pretty comprehensive. So, we just put it down as a discussion today.
Okay. This would give us time to take that...
Yeah, and we have a, actually, an attorney reviewing it as well. Then we have, we have Ms. Tony at 8:30, and she is looking at that just to make sure the language is correct. And that is for area expertise, our company, Vision and Dental Plan. Yeah, I think there's some tabs items, if you want to go in and talk about what you've done. See, now, we went through internal review of payment process, and we looked at inconsistencies in provider payments for similar services, as well as payment processing delays. And so, we were looking at redoing our dental plan to make sure that we did not have that. So, one of, so one of the, we researched different health insurance plans, reached out to American Dental Association, West Virginia Dental Associations, and other representatives. We've gotten together a draft of the plan, and Mrs. Stoller says it's being reviewed by legal. So, the main points of that is that deductively remain the same or reduced. And look at the green tabs in your two plans, the white green, those will show you where the deductives are. So, you can compare quickly, because you've got both a new plan and a new current plan. One of the things we're looking into, one is possibly expanding the vision coverage. That should be for your review. Looking at aligning the dental plan with our fiscal year. So, that we actually find what code enrollment is in all the periods, standard with health insurance processes. What's from PEIA?
PEIA or...
There's the R.1 and the 230 as well.
And that's what, that's what you're wanting to do with this?
There is, on the yellow paper, is a proposed timeline for the dental plan implementation. It's a very normal plan, timeline, and put those different people there. The, we would lay here, and then we'd use July next. And then we want to, there's some contractual issues that we can get into with a comment that we have currently, that we need to deal with. We actually put in there the process of how plans would be presented, and when they would be processed for payment, and shore that up so we can reduce the time lapse. The biggest part of our old plan was that it was heavily aligned with a specific third-party provider. And it was their coverage and their networks and everything, it's very hard to go out for. Then for a third-party administrator, it that, just ties them into that. One of the board members had requested that I, to alleviate the issue with paying different prices to different providers for the same service, was to come up with a rate for every service that we pay, much like we have in vision. The problem with that is there's over 600 dental codes. And then we would get stuck having to look at that and become different experts. So, the recommendation was to really define a third-party administrator, get their network, build their network, and no problem.
But with that provider, then they would set payments.
What there is on page, page two. Page two of the plan, that pink, that pink tab, you will see that we put in some language in there. This is from maybe dude, my attorney, that talks about how we actually tighten up so we don't pay one provider like $100 for a payment, and another one for the exact same service period.
So, it'll be consistent, no matter who the provider did that with?
Yes. Yeah, the attorney this morning, only thought, said it would be impossible to do 600 and some like that. That's really putting us in the weeds with that. So, she recommended, she's going to review this language to make sure it covers what we need to cover. That is...
Is this the provider, or they have the understanding that they're going to pay? As long as they didn't pay?
That would be communicated. When you're signed up for a network, and most of our dentists, a lot of our dentists are part of a network anyway, when you sign up for the network, you're agreeing to that payment schedule. And of course, we don't know if we work in a third-party dental provider, but it's constantly, we need to talk about that. And that would be whenever we, after we've got to bid.
Well, I would think in general, it's just more fair, everybody's getting paid the same. Not what, don't think they're comparable.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you think you said it's valid, it still affects when you buy?
Our current, this goes on the year, January to December, so we currently have our... But one of the things, open enrollment is July, is April 2nd to make it even in our current plan for PEI, for our regular health insurance. PEI, and then, but in our current plan, there is no defined enrollment periods. It's not well-defined in special circumstances enrollment. All that's defined in here, and it's highlighted with one of your tabs there as well. But this year, if you're going to have an enrollment, are going to be coordinated. We don't have a day scheduled at each school location, or if it's a case of like a middle, high school, but you do there one day. And if anybody wants to go see her, then with brain or whatever, she is there for the day so that she can provide that service, and then we also only find the person that's in the office as well. And that we might just have to be able to discuss that with them as well.
So, based on this current timeline, you want us to add this on the agenda for the first meeting, reapproved by the first of April?
That's ten, if you wanted to go that route.
When is, when is open enrollment starting?
I think it's the second.
Second?
Yeah.
Today is the 17th? Have you worked with any of the staff, and the teachers, or any of the, have they had any input or buy-in?
Well, actually, the dental plan, as we have discussed, is pretty straightforward about what, you know, where provider coverage is. I've communicated a couple times when I've seen the plan, I said, hey, what do you think about this optional vision? Additional, or things like that. What else do you think is okay?
I just want to make sure that everyone understands that we're not taking, I want to actually digest it first.
Well, that's what, that's what we're limited to, you know?
I also want to make sure that everybody understands we're not taking anything we're adding.
We, that's exactly what, so actually, the deductible would stay the same in separation with the doctor. We're proposing, we reduce it. We had $50, that was, and we reduced that, ended up $50, that was a lot. The other was laser surgery.
That's what I was looking at, maybe it was laser surgery, adding laser surgery.
And actually, it's a little bit like, it's like a light panel, you have more damage. The nice thing about laser surgery is once you get that, you know, another guy's saying, oh. And I know that we have a lot of people with around under 40 age group that like laser surgery will be rather expensive. And the research I've done a few times, there's a lot of networks out there that are part of a specific network. You may be able to get this announced on laser surgery, but then that would be a bit harder.
Have the dentists had any input?
I had an order with the West Virginia Dental Association, and I started out there, working Thursday, the director, and I said, how do I get them, when do they come together? And they had a conference, and our attorneys, they said, I didn't tell them. I actually speak at conferences and most of them. But anyway, so, I sent out a survey, an inquiry, a little survey. She sent it out to our dentists. They're like, they're all okay with it. I got no response back from them, and then she hooked me up with their regional representative. And I met with them, shared our concerns, and they shared their concerns about how this payment, things getting not processed. And then they have upset, so having to resubmit things over and over. So, then, I, we typed up the letter, communication to share our, overview of our issues. And there was another meeting of the continuing education, you know, that they had, that they tried to get me on. And the attorney said, I did with him, so he handed that out for us.
What company are we, or what company are the employees with this?
We're currently with American Benefit.
American Benefits, so, so now, will we have other companies come in?
We don't know yet. We have a new plan in, because first thing is about the plan, because the plan should drive everything else. It looks like the plan was originally written by that group that we currently have, and we've not changed it other than make it look pleased. So, the first part is the plan, and once we have a plan that people can actually live upon, we're going to let it set it out to a third-party administrator, that having asked for request for proposal, and then move forward with that from there.
So, in the end, there will still only be one provider?
One admitted.
One, right?
One's been admitted.
We're actually the provider.
We are the...
Okay, but I mean...
And we, it's true, we are one.
Are we currently doing open enrollment with dental vision, the same as health right now?
There is, there is, there is.
There's a time period?
No.
But if we do line it up, well, that's, I don't want to have to wait a whole other year.
Like, if we line it up, then whenever, or whenever the court made our means, we can stop, but they can say.
So, I would suggest, let's put it on the next agenda for discussion and possible action. Gives us all a chance to look at it, and then at that point, if we want to make adjustments or do anything, from that standpoint, we have that ability to push it off a little bit. But I'd like to see something like this implemented this year for next year, if possible. But the April 1st is a little, that's a little bit quick.
We have a little bit of wiggle room.
Okay. Any other questions about the health benefits and documentation?
Thank you. There was a lot of...
Yes, thank you very much. I think this is going to be really good. All right, next we have delegations. We have one delegation today. It is Jeremy Griffin, Administrative Guidelines. You have five minutes, sir. Typically, I will tell you that the board does not interact with... Understood. Yep. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. My name is Jeremy Griffin. I am a Bridgeport alum, a 30-year active-duty special operations officer, retired recently, now chief pilot for Fairlawn State University. I believe in high standards and fair treatment. Recently, my son was involved in a physical altercation at Bridgeport High School. And if a child is deserving of a punishment, I'm all for that. But I also believe in the right to self-defense. I was told by numerous families who reached out to me after this event happened that don't expect a whole lot from Bridgeport leadership. But I am the person that I don't know leaderships, I'm going to go with an open mind, and I'm going to listen and take it in and make judgment myself. I was sorely disappointed. A couple areas I'm going to cover is vague policy for physical altercations, the disconnect between the vice principal and the principal, and then the dispute process itself. As far as the policy goes, it's stated in your policy, one to three days ISS and/or OSS. On numerous occasions, the vice principal, he called me and told me in person that they issued him the minimum punishment since my son did not start the altercation. He got one day in school and one day out of school. That seems like a fair punishment for throwing a punch, which my son did do. However, that's not the minimum. He handed me the policy, wanted to argue with me in his office. I don't believe he has a fundamental grasp on the and/or portion. He refused to see my side of the point of view, so I asked to speak with the principal. While I spoke to the vice principal, though, I asked about the policy and the right to self-defense. He said, if any involvement is, you're being punished, regardless of who starts it and who finishes it. You're being punished. I said, well, my son has been trained in jujitsu and martial arts since he was six years old. If he just took the other... If he just took the other individual down and held him, would he be punished? Yes. If he did nothing and got punched? Yes. So the punishment is, is all the same regardless of my child's actions. So why not throw the punch? Right? He was being choked, so why not throw the punch? On top of that, the other child's been involved in other altercations. This is my son's first time ever being in trouble, VHS. Why did they receive the same punishment? The disconnect, so despite saying one day's in school, one day out of school, the vice principal says, that's our policy. When I spoke to the principal, she said, three days out of school is our policy, you're lucky. That seemed very condescending and rude in the way she delivered it. And at no point was she willing to hear my side of the argument. So the disconnect continued. She stated, they always give that, we're lucky. I was told that the dispute punishment could be enforced despite she issued the punishment on the spot in front of me. So I asked, how do I dispute this if you're sending my child to ISS at this moment? She said, you just have to dispute it. I said, well, the punishments were rendered, how do you dispute something that's already been rendered? I said, fine, my son just got sick, I'm going to take him home. We'll cut that as his OSS, is what she said. Again, how do I dispute something that's already been accomplished? I can't get that day back. It can't be taken from my son's record. He can't miss the assignments. He missed a field day activity that he was very much looking forward to, that he earned the right to be at. Again, he was attacked, choked by another kid. He defended himself. I asked for the dispute process in which she explained, I talked to Mr. Snyder, I believe is the gentleman's name, at school, where he was helpful. However, he offered to review the, the video footage and get back to me, and what she did. At no time while I was at Bridgeport High School, did they say, hey, we have video footage of this, should we review it for you? They didn't offer that. However, throughout the day, Mr. Snyder eventually contacted me, and he said, despite the fact there is a camera in the school, it is such poor quality that he couldn't determine anything. So I asked, why do we have cameras in schools? Why not pay for better equipment? And if the intent is to keep children safe, then we should do that. I'd like to see that video footage myself as well. I feel like I have the right to see that. Other kids and other students were allowed to witness on behalf of the assaulter and not my child. I don't know why, it was never explained to me. Principal said, in the write-up, it appeared that the hands of the other student went near my child's neck. There was red marks on his neck when he came home. He said he saw that. How they were there four hours after the fact, he didn't see it, is beyond me. It just, the entire write-up was very, very vague, and at no point did they attempt to decipher what actually happened. They just levied judgment and punishment regardless of the facts. And the vagueness of the policy, one of the three days, I understand, because that allows you all to implement a guideline, and then school leadership can, excuse me, they can then determine the amount of punishment is appropriate. So why do they have a generic guideline? You have given them some lateral judgment here, and they apply none. Lastly, we were told we could fill out the citizens' conflict resolution. It goes to the principal that I'm complaining about, that makes no sense. So I would like to fill this out with you all, if that's possible. At no point was either of them helpful. They allowed me to come in, they allowed me to talk, at no point were they helpful whatsoever. And again, if I had a troubled children, I had a kid who was always in trouble. In this repeat performance, I expect him to be punished, first time, attacked by a kid who's done several. So my, my bottom line, and I'll leave you all with this, is the Bridgeport High School principal and vice principal. The vice principal either is not smart enough to interpret your guidelines that you've given him, or he's unwilling, and the principal is absolutely flat out unwilling to listen to parents. That's all I have, but thank you for your time. Sir, if you would like to hang out after, until the meeting's done, we'd be able to discuss anything, so better, best not during the meeting. Thank you. Okay, superintendent's update.
Sure. Just wanted to let you know, we finally did receive a waiver from the state last Friday. It was a fill-in form, and we can ask for days. The specifications were government, or the governor shutting down the state for an emergency or any other emergency that we feel could be deemed necessary, since we had educational loss for our snow day. So we have filled that out, we have asked for days. We had the cyber incident, so we could use that, and we also had the governor's shutdown of the state. So we submitted that, it's on a play, and we will, as soon as they let us know. If we, if we get the waiver, then the calendar would just be what it is right now, last day for students would be the 30th. If not, they did have us, in the course of all this waiver, go back and convert the president's day back to an OSB day on our calendar. They had us correct that, and then see where we were at at the end of the year, and it would be the 2nd, 3rd, and 4th of June if we have to make that date. So we'll know, hopefully, whenever they just, they're going at county by county. They didn't do a statewide waiver, so, but they did give us a process, and it is complete. So we'll let you know as soon as, as we know.
Who does, who does the approvals?
It's Jeffrey Kelly's office, and what, they have a new person in charge, Jordan McCray. He's brand new with she, she is new with the calendar, so she's kind of learning as well, and working with this process. And then, they didn't really say what they notified.
I was about to.
Yeah, they didn't really give us the, they just said submit as soon as possible, and there was no deadline. And they know that counties are needing to know, because we need to let our parents know.
Well, that, the reason I, the reason I am asking is because there's been some discussion about spring break keeping, that I've heard, keeping Good Friday and Easter Monday, but possibly pulling back some of the spring break days to make up for this. Not, not in terms of hearing out what I'm talking about.
Well, if you'd like me to respond, our spring break was a protected week. We, we put our OSB days at the end of the year, so those are non-days that you can convert our spring break. You're hearing in other counties that they're converting spring break because they put OSB days that way. So over the course of years of developing a calendar, people like that spring break protected. So we, we generally, as a rule, do not put OSB days during that spring break.
We should make that known, or I don't know how we would push that out to the public so that they understand what it is, the reason we're not converting when they see our counties converting days.
That would be good, something in the newspaper, wouldn't it?
I think it has really been brought to our attention this time, and I've already had a conversation with Mr. Oliver when he starts putting out next year's calendar. All of those, like PL days, OSB days, O days, probably, if you're in education, you kind of understand that. But, so we think that's going to probably, probably a disadvantage if we don't have a code down there explaining those days. We're going to make sure that those are clear for next year on, these are the days you can convert, they're usually orange days, are the only days on our calendar. And we usually make them orange, are the only days we can convert. And there are six of those. So that could make it clear, and then we'll put a definition of all those, what those mean, because they do add them. We've got TP days, we've got PL days. And the.
Sounds like we're playing for the worst and hoping for the best.
Absolutely. So, but regardless, the latest will be the fourth. That could be the latest for the calendar.
So if we do get the approval from the state for the waiver, then that means.
We're, we're back on.
We're back toward the calendar.
Typical calendar that was approved this year.
Going to June, no extra days?
No extra days. Last day for kids will be the 30th.
Okay.
All right. The other piece is you have your discipline data sheets in front of you. We're trying to keep you up to date on what's going on in our new high school, so I appreciate Pam for putting that together each time, and really make sure we pay attention to it. So I appreciate that. Also, we have all of the getting personnel, the police, where to deliver all the great forestry alignments. She gave you an overview at the last meeting we had. Those are out, and now we're getting information with your hearings or whatever, before employees' opportunities. So I want to know if we have some scheduled, April 1st, April 1st, so those hearings. And then the financials are available for your finance, and then I have, we have a draft of the disposition plan that we've been working on. And then we have a facilities update.
Yeah, just an update on the substantial completion date for the number four project. The original substantial completion date was going to be July 1st, and it's been approved, moved to July 13th based on what happens. I think that was reasonable. Simpson, we still don't have a substantial completion date because they just got, they're doing footers, so they should be timed in the rebar this week and laying the concrete. As soon as that, that part gets finished, then we've got a plan to look at the substantial completion date. The good thing is, when you move those substantial completion dates, they can cost money. Simpson's, so far, it's not going to cost us money to move that substantial completion date. So that's, that's a good thing. And it's unfortunate it's not going to be finished for school to start, but I think that road kind of helped them a little bit. The secure entrances at Mountain Middle and Rubber Seabird are about 50% complete. They're looking good. They've come along really well. So those substantial completion dates, or those two, secure entrances is May 1st. And then Liberty High School and Mountain Middle, we have a meeting tomorrow with Emma Walton from McKinley to kind of go through some of the final design of those projects, along with Liberty and some of the things we're going to be doing there. And the plan is, and I don't believe you or you talked to John Jeff, because I think May is when those will be bid out.
Yes.
So we can, we can fast-track those and get those accomplished. I believe that's all, handle, unless there's any questions.
I should let them know, you guys visited Bridgeport High School and have a plan to do a secure entrance there, and I believe maintenance will be doing that in-house.
Yes.
At Bridgeport High School. I had looked at, it's an MIP project coming up, and I can't help, but I've got to go after money. They may turn us down this time, but I thought you can't just leave it sit on the table. And anyway, so we were looking at something we could go after, and we thought maybe we could get funded for, and so the application is done, I'm waiting for some information from McKinley. We're looking at doing a secure entrance at Bridgeport Middle School. And if not, I believe in-house we can do that, but it was one that was simple, or simpler to complete, it's very similar to Mountain Middle. So I'm, we're going to go after that, I'll provide that application as soon as I get, I'll have them on the third agenda. But that's, that application is due April the 4th. So we'll get that down tomorrow. So, exciting thing is that will take, the secure entrance is really.
It will.
About everywhere, so I think that was a, you know, probably the best one to go after. I think the Liberty secure entrance is, we've looked it in, got a good plan.
That's what we're going to talk about tomorrow, and it'll be played around the same time that we have those projects out for Liberty, Mountain High, and RC.
Yeah, I think there's a good plan for that security. We kind of wanted to see, you know, once you get your administrator there, how they wanted that building to operate, you know, where you wanted to put that. So I think that's, that's a good plan for that. Now, did you have a question?
I have two questions. One, Jimmy, though, in number four, were they painting, you gave me an answer, but I forgot what the answer was. Were they painted outside of the box?
That's not going to be the color.
Okay, what, what's it going to be?
It's going to be, it's going to be red on the outside.
They're, they're going to rip all this? To match.
Yeah, we picked out the ground and everything to try to get those color schemes to look, you know, uniform. Even the, even the window colorings, pretty much everything.
Okay, because it wasn't.
Yeah, when I first looked at it, when I drove up, it's kind of, what's that? And so I.
Okay. And I just had to live in here and receive all the time. I, I said, surely that's not the way we're leaving.
It's not even a good model. It's like they tried to match, but it didn't work.
Okay, my other question now is for you on the discipline paper. When it says police notify, is that the in-house police, or is this outside?
Because we have pro officers available, and they're usually always involved. Sometimes they're a level one, they're usually there, so that's why. They're not always like a level three or four.
So this, this doesn't mean we got outside police.
Oh, no, no. Our pro officers usually report, and if they need extra support, generally, they can handle any in-house situation.
Like what, I saw 129 exits, and police notified 81 towns?
And that could be maybe, that's not 190, 89 students, it could be one student in trouble a few times.
Yeah.
And if there's a pro officer on site, most likely they're there.
Okay. That was, that was a little bit confusing. So, I thought, well, that's case, let's read, blow up.
All right.
I'd like to, I'd like to add one to the discipline report. I like the report that we do. Could we possibly, instead of bringing from August 19th through March 14th, break it down possibly into quarters? So we can have a specific quarterly number per school, and maybe once a quarter, get the total subgroup list. Not, not every, not every time, but once a quarter, get the subgroup list, and break it out into quarter by month. Well, I'd like to have this as a monthly report, and then as a quarterly report.
A Q and A.
Yeah, so that I can see in April, there were X amount of discipline problems. In May, there were X amount of discipline problems. June, or X, so instead of having a total for the year, it might be a month. But quarterly, I want to have all the segments. I remember who's got.
I want to follow up too. Talking about this discipline administrative guidelines, we've had a conversation that this summer, we're going to hit those hard with some of our new administrators, and really going through what a level one is, what a level two is, what a level three. So that's going to be training this summer to go through those guidelines. I think the guidelines are good. I think they've been thought through, and I think sometimes we define things differently, but that's something that we have recognized here, and have had a conversation, setting up a couple days in the summer of just training on discipline in-house, or maybe some outside folks coming in and talking about those different models, and what they need.
And, and once it starts, once you start with the, you know, get it done, and it starts the school year, can you, can we follow up with, to make sure that it's one of whatever you train them, and all, rather than, you know, one for the death penalty, right off the bat, that it's worked through stages so that, you know. Because all they want to say is, well, it's in policy, this is what it is. And, you know, we all know that there's got to be a little bit of flexibility, and make sure they understand that.
We're, we're just now looking, and if there's anything that we're going to want us to do, we're just now looking at those summer training sessions. We try to identify things that we see that we need. We're definitely doing aid training this summer. On no fault, I think we've just put people in positions, they don't have all the training that they need, so we're trying to get caught up on that, to look at our funding, and we'll be putting together.
We also did that last summer.
We've done training, but we're going to.
Can we be, can we be invited to the training session?
Sure. You would like to, we're looking at that calendar now on how we're going to set.
I'd like to hear your, your explanation to them, and then like to understand, if they understand what you're, so that if there's conflict down the group, it comes back to us, or whether, or maybe we set the training and.
Yeah, we're already really looking at even that beginning five days, beginning of the calendar, we try to protect two of those days for our staff to prepare and get ready for students. So we'll be scheduling those, and then looking at the other days for training. That's the big process. But if there's any topic you'd like us to cover, we can definitely do that. The other, I think, Dunn has a, Mr. Ho has a.
Okay, Technical Center, they have. Okay, Technical Center, they have March 28th and 29th and everybody, anybody who wants to is welcome to visit. There will be a different the local skills USA is going to go on and it's going to go on in different different areas. So many down here at Career Center, so many at the another Career Center. And so they'll have a schedule out as to where everything will take place. And the UGC had, I forget the list of names, or was it, I believe, 64 from down here at the local Career Center qualified for the state meet in in different areas. So that that will be taking place first 28th and 29th.
Where was that at? Does that have a UGC building?
Our UGC and then other areas too.
Yeah, they're hosting the Fairmont State, the kids are traveling. Our locations, a lot of it is happening at our UGC. So if you're interested in seeing that piece of it, you can see their displays there. They were showing some of the art that they do with welding. It's fascinating how detailed.
You can email us the schedule.
Sure, yeah.
You know, we'll probably get this next time, next meeting you have. And the enrollment was setting at 378. It's now down to 375. And usually the job offs occur in the adult programs, not in the actual school programs. It's holding pretty steady the kids that are coming there. There have been rumor that the LPN program was on West Ford and it might not survive. Those are maybe if there was cutbacks, we were notified guarantee that the LPN program at Career Center is staying. It's going to be
It was just one of those grant funding days and that was not true. They're there up and going and taking appointments now.
And the last thing was basically was the approval for their lawn care. It's Henry's Lawn Care and when they load the whole area and everything is $550. And then every other time they had one where they trimmed near the fence and get it all dressed up and it's $80 more every time they trim around the fence. And meeting date was changed this next time to April the 7th. Just off the end of the day. That you handle that.
I think that's all I have, other than as you hear the students going to UGC. There's a lot of great things happening across the county. Sometimes we hear we don't always get it out. You were involved, your daughter was involved in a play at VHS. It was phenomenal. Nine to five, I think Bird has theirs coming up. So a lot of the spring plays and things happening across the county. So a lot of good things.
Lincoln had theirs too, but I missed that one because the electric went out in the middle of the hall.
Wow. Anyway.
It would be nice to have dates and then like notifications from the board to kind of see what those types of events are that maybe we don't
Like a list that you could get to.
Right, like NFA and stuff like that that come about so that we can make it out there.
A lot of things happening in the spring, going into the summer too, so.
Some of those items are on web page.
Some, yes.
Yeah, maybe a
Comprehensive.
Because I thought they keep up.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, does a lot of good things happen. So thanks to our schools and our students and our teachers for, because none of that happens without a lot of work.
And the parents.
And the parents getting
All right, thank you. Any questions for the superintendent? All right, brings us down to consent items. Is there a motion to accept consent items as presented?
I'm seven.
Second. Do you have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Business, if there are no objections, we will bring the approval of funds for Lincoln Middle School forward to the first item. So as presented by the superintendent, there's a motion to approve funding for Lincoln Middle School for the amount of $13,160 from the contingency fund and the remaining $13,160 will be divided between the school and maintenance to address the safety concerns.
So move.
Wait, sorry, sorry.
Levy.
Levy, okay. Yeah, we might want to change that to the maintenance fund, but you're not pulling any of that out of maintenance.
Not Lincoln.
Yeah, okay. Just want to make sure because this is Lincoln's. Yeah, I might want to change that data right here. Divided between the school and the levy. Okay. So is there a motion reflecting that we will divide between the school and the levy to address the safety concerns?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Out of state travel study request? Is there a motion to approve the out of state travel study request?
I'm seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approved the gym floor refinishing project. This is for Liberty. Recommend approval of R. H. Huffman to complete the repair and refishing projects. $38,727 Liberty Gym Floor using Source Wall Purchasing Cooperative. $31,358 Summer Floor relocating by renewal contract. It was publicly bid on February 21st, 2024. Total amount of $70,085. Are motions?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Central van and storage are moving schools. There's a recommendation on purchase order to central van and storage, removing costs not to exceed $255,021.50. Central van and storage is on state contract. So there was no need for the bid, I'm assuming, correct? Is there a motion to approve $255,021.50 commercial bid? This would be to move Liberty High School, Mount near middle, WI middle, and Woodfield Elementary.
I'm seven.
Is there a second?
For discussion, I'll second.
All right, and open discussion.
How many how many companies were contacted to bid on this moving?
None, as as it states in the motion, it's a company that's on state contract list. The state contract list. Already approved. They're approved by the state, similar to how the recent used to use the co-ops, they used to use the co-ops. This is this late order on trade list. Second?
Sort of like container.
Right, they're they're approved vendors by the state of West Virginia and counties can go to that.
Army
Yes, counties can go to that.
I can speak to that. We did do research and there just really aren't any other companies that are at the capacity that they are. They really are the only commercial level company. We did use another company when we did an interim here back in the fall, if you remember. And that company, they did a great job here, but they just did not have the capacity to do the scale of this, the equipment, the people, the insurance coverage, all of it. There just really wasn't even anybody else to compare to.
Okay.
Yeah.
A bunch of money. It's a bunch of money without a doubt.
It is.
But we have you to make it through. It might be
You can't.
Middle School next year. We're all not much.
Well, we also have to use our maintenance group for moving everybody back into Simpson and Hunterford when those additions are finished. We're using them for that plus all that they normally do, so, yeah.
With everything else that's going to be
We actually worked with them to get even a little lower price.
Yes, they shaved about $30,000 off the first estimate.
Yeah, we were like
We were happy that they came to the table to be a partner.
Absolutely.
It's a nightmare. I just remember when I retired, I had to get a U-Haul just for my classroom.
Imagine that comes, how many others.
It's a nightmare.
I guess you got, as far as reading through that or, you know, for any particular reason or related things like that, so.
And there's been a lot of legwork visiting
The walkers, we spent probably 16 hours.
Pam and Julie have been out visiting classrooms. We're not moving things that we don't need to move. We're trying to use what we have in the buildings and literally every classroom's either had a picture taken of it or an inventory has been done. So we're not, you know, just moving a lot of things that we don't need to. A lot of this is teachers were making sure that they have their classroom stuff boxed up and labeled and will be brought right to their classroom. That is the goal, to make the transition easy for them, but it is difficult to pop up and get your personal teaching stuff from that building. We're trying to just make it
What we're going to do with the junk? It's going to be about
I don't know. Mr. Lopez, what are we doing with the junk?
We move pretty quick to, you know, so we've worked with Kaufman's in the past and they they can inventory all those items and auction those off pretty quick. Or any any auction company can do that.
No, I think all
Yeah. So, you know, the what takes time is we hate we hate to discard things, so we always allow other schools to go in and look and see if they can use that. So and and I know that we want to try to get rid of the schools in a time manner so that we're not paying overhead and utilities for those. So we'll try to do as quickly as we can on that.
I know it's like Mount near middle, we there's a space there that because you just don't know when people move in, they may need something. So if there's good items available still in that building, we've got a location where putting those. So if people get moved in and they think, oh, I need something, they can go in there before that's moved. Items that are still in good shape. And I think we're doing that at Mount near middle. Yes.
Newest.
Yeah, we just don't want stuff taken out of there if it's still viable and we can use it, so.
Are we going to move one school completely and then go move another school completely so that we don't have, you know,
Yes.
Like a part of our group?
As part of the schedule.
Okay.
Is it possible, once we have gotten things that we need to get done, done and before we were auctioning, you know, all the devastation that's happened in the southern part of the state, reaching out to other county boards or maybe possibly through the school board association to see if there are things that we have that we're not going to use, other counties would benefit from or that we could use?
And those counties, I'm sure would even come up and pick those items up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just feel that
No, I think that's a great idea.
That would be a very, you know,
Like Minka, McDowell, they've had some really
The point of that community members and Harrison that would be willing to
Sure, sure.
I mean, there are made Would probably take a day to turn home, so I think that's a great idea. Because they're they're good items. We're just we're going to use the best that we have for the move and
Any further questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, brings us to sale of former Norwood Elementary School. Is there a motion to approve the sale of Norwood Elementary School through Magnus Canis Properties LLC for the sum of $291,000, $291,500 to a contract price, which includes the buyer's premium in the amount of $26,500 payable to Kaufman Realty Auction.
So we're receiving 291,000 minus the 20 call?
Two sixty five.
Let's get a motion before discussion, before discussion. Let's get a motion. Any discussion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, no discussion.
My question was, so Kaufman gives $26,000 or whatever, but that that is paid by the buyer. He pays that directly to them.
The buyer pays.
So that's confusing. Say 291,000, what's really going to be 267?
Well, that's that's correct. That's correct.
Okay, I would like to actually
Right, right. But I'd like to lay out all the funds, see what the funds are.
Yeah. Well, we should be okay. And who is this company? Anybody having an idea?
Magnus Canis.
What is it?
Magnus Canis LLC.
The real estate
Magnus Canis Properties.
It's Allen, Clarksville or Allen?
Maybe, maybe the I think they're out there.
So maybe I think what
From what I understand, partners.
Let me
All right. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. D E donation of decommissioned school bus. There's action for transportation department requesting permission to donate the decommissioned school bus to Stonewood Fire Department for first responder training experience. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor. Great idea, absolutely great idea. You know, we used to have some moth commerces here, things that we used to do with schools and fire departments and things like that. Do we still do that?
We haven't had a real war on. We're doing a lot of the school training, active shooter training with all of our 911. I mean, that's comprehensive, but I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, like moth disasters, something like, you know, a, you know, school bus catches fire, how do you respond or
Maybe everything says, have to get all the losing done.
Right, yeah.
Have to get everything moved and set and everything's functioning, then it might be something that we're
Back at this
Especially in larger situations.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Recommendation for contract renewal to Precision Properties for gas, I'm sorry, for grass cutting. Precision Properties, grass cutting, second renewal contract for Salem, Shinston, Wilsonburg, Lumberport areas of the county, estimated cost not to exceed $125,000. Is there a motion?
I'm seven.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion regarding this contract?
Just is this the last year forward or is it and next year will be a rebid?
I thought this was the third year of that contract.
It is.
This is the third year of the contract.
Three of three.
Next year, all these will be all these will be without a bid.
So we we have separate contracts for the other feeder areas then?
Don't believe it's anyone company that will take them all.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah. I think they'd like to, but
Well, what happens? They lose customers actually. They're tied up for three years and they have to start over again. What happens if they have them all?
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, recommendation of contract renewal and purchase orders to issue to Evergreen Lawn Care for grass cutting in Bridgeport, Clarksville, South Harrison County areas not to exceed $220,000. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, is this also in the three year?
Yes.
All of them, okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next item is a motion to enter contract with Frontier Communications for wide area network services. Federal application for E-rate is due March 26th. RFP for services were solicited according to federal existing guidelines for 28 days with bid opening held on March 10th, 2025. Consideration and approval will allow Consideration and approval will allow the county to meet deadline requirements and will allow us to have our provider in place. And you have the bid sheet. On the executive contact, Frontier was the front one, front record. And the amount, the amount to discuss. Is is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve the contract with Frontier?
I.
I second it.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, Mr. Hug.
I I feel like I need to recuse myself my son of a wolf for Frontier.
Okay, all right. We'll let the refusal from Mr. Hug. Bid sheet is Frontier with three hundred ninety a month for one gigabyte. That's what it says. That will be for the entire county, correct, for all the schools, everything, or is it just up here for this?
No, it's everything.
Everything. Service everywhere. All right, very good. All right, the motion has been made, seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Big difference between moth's vacance.
What what happened with that, I think it's important to note, and I think already back there. Is the rate comes down significantly over what we were paying before, but what that allows us to do is expand our bandwidth. So we might end up paying close to the same amount, but we're getting a lot more for that dollar now. So their their rate was significantly lower.
My understanding of Frontier's wouldn't back being for Ross.
That's the one.
I mean, all there's everybody understands that they, my understanding is that Ross is behind Frontier back.
They have to go with current contracts anyway, so.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be disrupt far.
No.
Okay. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have done approval of funds for Lincoln Personnel Matters. I would actually like to go back into executive session on personnel, just for a couple of minutes. I will make a personnel motion pursuant to six dash nine eight dash four two of Washington Code that the board go into executive session to discuss personnel and personnel matters, which if discussed in public might affect the reputation of any person. Second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries. Is there a motion to return from executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Back in the main session. To the personnel matters. All right. I would like at this point to remove the Washington Irving baseball, baseball coach recommendation at this point to be postponed for later.
The coach or the, oh, pure coach?
It's the coach.
Or the head coach?
Yes. That's what it is.
Oh, the boy that goes to last year?
No, no, that's the one we're talking about. Yeah. So not, not eliminate the position, not eliminate the position. It's just the volunteer coach.
Volunteer?
Yeah, yes. It's a volunteer coach.
Okay, I was, well, yeah.
No, it's, until we can make a, until we can find some information out. So is there a motion to approve the personnel recommendations as presented with notice to Paul Washington Irving coach, middle school coach, volunteer position, baseball coach?
I'll send this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us down to legal and disciplinary matters. Is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation as presented to terminate effective March 17th, 2025, reset SS Stoller A ECAT, segregated more for you elementary? Is there a motion?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board member comments? Mr. Tucker?
Happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody. There's a wee bit of Irish in all of us and a whole lot of me.
Mr. Hoag?
I had two things. I don't think I forgot one. One is I like to, I appreciate the turnout that took place for one of our former, former coaches and person of the community, Neil Messenger. It was quite an outpouring of people and respect that the man had on through the years and for his wife Esther and kids. It's been, been a tough, tough few days for them in regard to that. And so, there was something else that at my age, I forgot.
Dr. Centurion?
Yeah, I had an action packed weekend and apologized to Lincoln High School that the electric went out in my house. I couldn't get to their play. Thoroughly enjoyed the play at Bridgeport and I went to my first FFA sale at South Harrison. Don't complain about eggs because some of theirs went for $200 to $400 a dozen, but just the outpouring of the family and community support and kudos to their teachers and kudos to the families and the teachers and directors of Bridgeport High School. It's great to see that in our community.
Very good.
Did you buy a song with those there?
I did not. I did make remarks and told the children how proud we were of them, but they were just as proud of themselves as we are of them.
Okay. We lost Mrs. Smith, so I don't know. Yes, she's, she's been, yes, we lost her. If she has something to say, we can ask her.
I just can't fall back on my head.
Yes.
We have two teams playing in the state tournament this week in Charleston. So best of luck goes out to Bridgeport Indians and to the.
Roshn.
Or Roshn.
They climb.
They both play on different days, but definitely they try out.
Absolutely. And good luck to them. I would like to express again to echo Mr. Hoag's sentiments, the Messenger, the entire Messenger family. They deserve our utmost sympathies at this time of need for them. And also I would like to mention that not only has Bridgeport High School won a couple different state championships, I was told this weekend they also won the Thesbian State Championship as well. So there are some pretty good things happening with our students here in the county. So all I'll say at the moment, anybody have any further comments, questions? This time I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.